Okay, welcome. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for joining us this evening at this public hearing for the Normandy Schools Collaborative. My name's Lisa, Lisa Sorino. I am with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. For those of you who don't know our nickname, sometimes we call ourselves DESI. So if you hear that, you'll know that's what that stands for. Or we refer to ourselves as the department. I'm Assistant Commissioner in the Office of Quality Schools, and I'm just going to be your brief tour guide, get us started on this public hearing, review the agenda very briefly. And before we get started, I do want to just acknowledge my colleagues from the department who are here this evening to hear what you all in the community have to say about supporting Normandy School Districts. So if our DESI, my DESI colleagues would stand, please. And I'll recognize first Commissioner Margie Van Deven, Deputy Commissioner Tracy Hines. At the registration table, we have Deputy Commissioner Carrie Monsis. And Carrie is going to be helping us adjourn our meeting at the end. Assistant Commissioner Chris Neal. Our Charter Director Shanika Harris. Joel, I'm sorry, Shanika Williams. Joel Anderson, Council. And Craig Larson, Area Supervisor. Thank you all for joining us. I'd also like to ask Mrs. Pamela Westburg-Hodge to wave to the group. Thank you, member of the State Board of Education. All right. So also thank you to Beyond Housing for their hospitality and for the Normandy Schools Collaborative, your leadership and board members for hosting. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ronald Roberts, Chair of the Joint Executive Board for the Normandy Schools Collaborative. Ron, where are you? Right in front. He's going to give you a presentation in just a few moments. Also, thank you to Chris Kramer from Beyond Housing, going to facilitate our community engagement discussion this evening. And I want to remind you just a little bit of the technical why we're here this evening. It's that state law calls for this hearing. Section 162.081 of the revised Missouri statutes call for the department to hold public hearings in school districts that are or have been unaccredited as long as the district remains unaccredited or provisionally accredited. And the statute further calls out that why are we here for the hearing? Is to convene community resources and provide an opportunity for them to come together, you all to come together and talk about how you might be able to support or what ingredients might be useful or necessary to support the district in its quest for more accreditation. So here's our agenda. We're going to begin with a few words from Commissioner Van Deven, followed by a brief presentation from Mr. Roberts. And then we'll move into group discussion at your tables. And we'll have a facilitated discussion that Chris will take care of. We'll return to the large room, and there'll be a report out from each table. And then we'll adjourn the hearing at 7:00 p.m. After Mr. Roberts' comments, Chris is going to lead you through these discussions. And we have just a small note on capturing your feedback because what you have to say is the whole point of this evening. And we're really glad that so many of you took time out of your circles to come and participate. We do have someone who is taking notes for the large group discussion. We'll have, we'll collect notes from each table. And then, of course, any individual, if you would like to leave your comments on the paper where we have the discussion questions, or if it's something that's not really related to those discussion questions, we've got some cards, some comment cards, and we encourage you to fill those out and leave those for us. So that's really how the evening is going to run. And I'm going to turn it over now to Commissioner Van Deven.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening. I just, I will be very grateful because we are here to hear from you this evening. And so we want to give plenty of time for that to occur. But I just want to say, it is great to be in Normandy with you again. It feels like it's been some time with the pandemic that we've been actually here in person with you, sharing your story, hearing your story, moving forward together. And I feel a real sense of optimism. It has been a challenging year across the nation, across the state. People said last year was challenging. This year was even more exhausting for many. But there is an incredible sense of optimism moving forward in this district and across the state. We're learning more and more every day about what it takes to really fully educate our children and what we need to do in moving forward throughout time. So we're eager to hear from you tonight. I want to say a couple of things on behalf of the department and on the State Board of Education. And that is, we do remain committed to transitioning back to a locally elected board. We've heard you loudly and clearly on that. You're eager for that to occur, as are we. So we will continue to move with those steps forward. I want to say that we are really focusing our comments on two primary areas tonight because it's the ones that we continue to hear the most about. And they're related. The first is student attendance. And again, that is not just in this district, this is across the nation. Our students' lives were drastically disrupted over the last couple of years. So how do we make coming back to school common practice, but most importantly, while they're here in our classrooms with our teachers, fully engaged in the learning processes? And we do a lot of that with our second issue, and that is great teachers and leaders. Such a priority for us across the educational world. We are really thinking about what does it take to find great teachers? What does it take to keep great teachers? And we know that that is the number one school-level factor that impacts their learning. And so that's what I'm going to hear from you tonight. Again, thinking about how do we serve our students? And how do we serve them well? And how can we at the department assist you in doing that? So thank you for having us tonight. We look forward to hearing your feedback and your comments. And this time, I'm going to pass it back to Lisa so that she can introduce our next... Or should I just hand it to Ron? Okay, I'm going to hand it to Ron. Because Ron, thank you so much for your leadership. We do appreciate the Joint Executive Governing Board and all that you're doing. And I certainly appreciate our conversations with Lucas Cross. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Van Deven. And just to clarify a little bit, it's not just my presentation. I'm here with an arsenal of folks and arrows in our quiver. And you'll be updated on what we have planned for Normandy next and Normandy now. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ronald L. Roberts. And I'm President of the Normandy Joint Executive Board for the Normandy Schools Collaborative. I'm privileged to serve for the Normandy Schools Collaborative. And I'm privileged to serve with an esteemed group of individuals dedicated to the mission of Normandy Schools Collaborative as a great place to learn and produce extraordinary individuals who represent the mystique of what we call the Viking Pride. Before I begin, I'd like to just have a moment of silence. Recently, we had some tragedies in the Normandy School relative to one of our students, Lucas Crossing. One of our students of the class of 2022, as well as a recent event in Texas that perhaps you've all heard about. But in this time of tragedy and just chaos, I'd like to give a moment of silence before we begin. Thank you. Dr. Van Deven, to the esteemed members of the DESI Board, to my fellow board members, to you in the audience, students, administrators, teachers, staff, parents. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come before you in this public hearing to update you on the many exciting, resilient, and innovative ways we're working as individuals collectively with our strategic partners to make Normandy School a great learning environment through hard work, resilience, excellence, demonstrated by educators, staff, administrators, and our board members. I'd like to express my gratitude and thanks to the municipal partnership and specifically Chris Kramer and the brilliant minds of the Beyond Housing Group for allowing, for hosting us tonight and serving as one of our key strategic community partners, which is very, very important to our mission to make Normandy Schools an excellent place. Thank you, Dr. Van Deven, as I indicated. And I want to welcome you all. At this time, I'd like to just take a moment to the elected officials within the Normandy Schools Collaborative. Would you please stand? Thank you. The administrators, teachers, and staff of the Normandy Schools Collaborative, would you please stand? I got to say this one more time. The teachers and educators of Normandy School Collaborative, if you're in the room, please stand. Are there any students in the room? Would you please stand? Parents of students in the Normandy School Collaborative, would you please stand? Thank you so much for your belief in us as we try to make Normandy a better place. And I want to really, really thank the bold leadership of the municipal partnership for their unapologetic leadership to push us to do what we attempt to do better. Thank you. During our brief time with you this evening, our objective is to present you with a comprehensive yet concise update on six key areas of focus of the many that we will invest tremendous time, fortitude, effort, and capitalizing off the energy and momentum that has kept and maintained Normandy on track for recapturing accreditation. But more specifically, on a path to excellence for which Normandy, despite our many challenges, has demonstrated this through our students and our amazing alumni. At Normandy, our mission is to prepare global leaders for college, career, productive citizenship by empowering community and confident leader learners and evaluating the unique contributions of every student. If I'm able to influence you, if we are able to influence you tonight, influence your thinking this evening in any sort of way, it will be to inform you that Normandy has all the right puzzle pieces necessary to make the Normandy Schools Collaborative a successful place to produce great students and ultimately, great leaders, great global leaders. Extraordinary examples of this were demonstrated last night during our 99th commencement exercise, where we graduated 120 students that became Normandy Vikings. These are global leaders. And if you weren't there last night, please tune into YouTube or any other virtual outlet to see. It was inspiring. It will inspire you as it inspired and captivated me. Our commencement speaker laced within his commencement address a poem that was recited by Dr. Benjamin Eliza May. It's called "God's Men". And this is so familiar to me because I'm not... Dr. Benjamin Eliza May was president of Morehouse College and is responsible for what we call the Morehouse Mystique. That mystique is representative of the mystique we have in Normandy as well. So please, if nothing else, tune in, dial in, whatever you got to do, pull it up on your phone, see it because it will inspire you. Over the next three to six to 12 months, we will construct an extraordinary puzzle that is representative of the resilience and our capacity to translate adversity into opportunity for greatness that so many of us enjoy and so many of us call the Viking Pride. I am joined by a group of leaders from our administration, staff, board, demonstrating the key words of the acronym BEING A LEADER. That means lifting expectations and delivering exceptional results. At this moment, I'd like to, I would be remiss if I didn't ask my fellow board members to please stand. We are a group of individuals that were appointed by DESI and also after eight years, which seems like an eternity, to have our first two elected officials after such a long time. I want those two particular individuals to please stand. Mr. Harlan Hodge and Dr. Christopher Peck. These two individuals came in hitting the ground running, demonstrating leadership that is sorely needed to augment the leadership that we already have, to really roll up our sleeves in a very short minute, but eternity extended to make Normandy a great place. At this point, I will now yield the podium to Dr. Christopher Peck, who is the leader of our transition team assisting the Normandy Schools Collaborative to complete the search for our new superintendent. And will pick up, that superintendent will ultimately pick up the map and carry us into the next phase of Normandy, a phenomenal learning environment that continues to inspire the next generation of global leaders that carry us, that who will carry us to the distinction of being a Normandy Viking. Dr. Peck?
You know, I want to start off tonight by first of all saying that it is under the direction and tutelage of our newly-elected President Ronald Roberts that the stability has come to this board that's needed to do the work best before us. Think about it this way. How do you even go about searching for a superintendent when there is not some strategic thought process that exists among the board itself? How do you go about searching for an interim superintendent or a permanent superintendent when there is not some level of alignment among the board members in terms of what we're looking for and how we go about finding it? And I just think we need to take a moment and recognize the extraordinary effort that it takes to build consensus and bring people to the table so that we all can rally around the common cause of moving Normandy forward. And let's just recognize our board president, Mr. Ronald L. Roberts. I want to say on behalf of the other elected board member in the room, Mr. Harlan Hodge, who is here, you've seen him tonight. Mr. Hodge and I were welcomed to this board with open arms. And so Commissioner Van Deven, I want you to know that there is no division between elected board members and appointed board members. We're just the board members of the Normandy Schools Collaborative. So getting right into the thick of things. We all know that it doesn't make good sense to rush searching for the talent, the know-how, the reputation, and all of the things that we need in a superintendent. Here we are. This is basically June. The end of the year is near. July 1 is fast, fastly approaching. Really doesn't make sense to rush through the process of saying, hey, look, we found somebody. That's not what we're trying to do. We're not just trying to find somebody. We're trying to identify the individual that is capable of moving this school district forward. And it just doesn't make good sense to rush that process. So in speaking with many of you that are in the room tonight and sharing with you the sentiments of the board and the considerations of the board, I want to share again tonight those considerations of the consideration with simply this. Why not put in an interim superintendent and take our time and wait until the proper season to conduct the superintendent search? And so with input from Dr. Steve Rutherford, who's here tonight from the Missouri School Board Association and members of the community and members of the staff, we all collectively agreed that we're not going to rush this process. We're going to take our time and identify the appropriate individuals to lead us forward. Our president and our tenured members of the board had the wisdom and foresight to say that even though this is our decision, this is our consideration, we need to monitor that transition. And so in monitoring that transition, a committee was formed. And that committee immediately began work identifying an administrator in charge, which in actuality, he was already the administrator in charge. So I want to recognize Dr. Phil Bosotieri, who was here this night. So as the administrator in charge, he is working collaboratively. And I want to add feverishly with the committee to make sure that this transition is a smooth transition. And when you think about the transition, here's something I think is very important for everybody to remember. And I want to thank Dr. Nikia Douglas for allowing me the opportunity to speak at that wonderful commencement ceremony last night. And one of the things that I spoke to was leadership. And I simply said this. We are a generation raised on the bizarre proposition that leaders and leadership equates to popularity. Leaders are not chosen to be popular. Leaders are chosen to lead. And so I say that to everyone tonight to say, we in this transition process are going to demonstrate leadership. We're going to hold those accountable who hold the titles to lead to do just that. And I'm so thankful to have individuals like our administrator in charge, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, who's a part of that committee. Dr. Crystal Rieder, would you please stand, please? Let's give her a big round of applause. So get ready. Everybody is not going to be happy. But the quickest way to fail is to try to please everybody. The end result is that we're making decisions that are in the best interest of the educational needs of the children that we serve. And so that's what this is about. We are anticipating, looking at some interim candidates. We're taking candidates from applications, from recommendations. Several people have made recommendations. And so we're looking at those candidates. What we're going to do is do some initial screenings through the committee. Once we get through some initial screenings, then we're going to look at some strategic interview questions that more than likely will come from Steve Rutherford and the Missouri School Boards Association. And then we'll present some questions, we'll present some candidates to the board. And then the board will then interview, decide what candidates they want to interview for the interim position. And then we'll put an interim superintendent in place. That's the plan at this point. Looking forward further down the line, in October, we're going to resume the superintendent search, the national search for the superintendent that's going to take the district forward. We're hoping to conduct some input forums, which Dr. Rutherford will be on hand this evening after this particular portion of the meeting ends. He'll be on hand to solicit some input from members of the community. We'll conduct those forums. And we're hoping to have a superintendent identified no later than December of 2022 this fall. With that being said, that's pretty much the update of the transition and the superintendent search. I'd like to go right into, right now, just a couple of things. Go to the next slide, please. Couple of things that we want to talk about that this presentation will address and cover. You can see there on the screen where those things are. And they're pretty much self-explanatory things. Dr. Crystal Rieder will be up to speak to a couple of those. And then also, Dr. Phil Bosotieri will be up to speak to a couple of those. Let's see here. Giving you more of an update on the strategic plan after hearing about the area of focus for the new superintendent. If we can go to, yes, it's up there. So here you can kind of see exactly what we're looking at, what we're focused on. And I'm going to take just two minutes to be a little bit more specific about a couple of these things before we call up Dr. Rieder and Dr. Phil Bosotieri. Our primary focus has to be student achievement. Has to be student achievement. Everything that we do. You know, a superintendent can make the difference in a district. The principal can make the difference in a building. But it's the difference the teachers make in the classroom that's the most important difference in the district. And so what we're looking for is making sure that all of our efforts, everything from redirecting funds... I know in recent board meetings, we've had some real debate around how we're spending money. And so what we're looking at as a board, as part of our strategic plan, is we're looking at redirecting funds back into classrooms, back into buildings, and tying all expenditures directly to something or someone that impacts student achievement. You know, I tell people all the time, my five-year-old and my mother think that I can do anything. But I know better than them. Everything that I've been able to accomplish and everything that I could consider has been a success in my life is because I was on a team with like-minded individuals. And that's what's going to happen going forward. We're looking at partnering with strategic partners, not just partnering with anybody. Again, partnering with someone that has something to offer our children. And so we will be, as the president has already stated, we will be working with the municipal partnership to pursue federal grant funding for wraparound services and things of that nature. We will be listening for input from our community leaders, Mayor Brian Jackson and Mayor James McGee. They're both here tonight. Let's give them another big round of applause. There's something to be said about the community involvement that pushes for accountability. I heard someone throw this term out, something about board overreach. And I want everybody to be clear. It's not about the over, it's about the under. We need to focus on the fact... We need to focus on the fact that our district is currently under and ensure that we're held accountable to get it done. We will be engaging our partners. That's a huge piece. Next thing, financial reporting, talking about our finances. The district is in decent financial shape thanks to the leadership of Dr. Busutieri and his department. However, we know the winds of change are coming from a standpoint of federal funding that may or may not dry up. So it means that we need to prepare now. And so we don't need to be spending money that we can't expect to have in the years to come. And so simply put, that's a huge part of our strategic plan going forward. Finally, as I've already said, the difference that's gonna change this thing for real is the difference that teachers make in the classroom. The classroom is the last magical place left on earth. It's where the magic happens. And so this board, under the leadership of President Ron Roberts, we intend to give teachers everything they need to educate children. No resource will be held back. We intend to hear from teachers. And we intend for all of our teachers to be supported. And so when you think about recruitment and retention of highly qualified educators, why? Because we know that the research is clear that the difference in whether or not a child's learned, whether or not a child learns, the most significant factor is the teacher. And so we've got to get behind the teachers that we have, first and foremost. We gotta get behind the teachers that we have. And we gotta get behind them in a real way. If they don't have the skills that they need, then that's why we have a curriculum and instruction department to build them up, to develop them, and to lead them to be the best possible teachers that they can be. And so as part of our strategic plan, this is what the board will leverage. But we are 110% behind, number one, recruiting the best teachers. Number two, developing our own teachers. And number three, making sure that our core of instructional staff is fully supported. And we must bring all of our resources to bear behind that work. So without further ado, and a little bit more detailed.
Development support along with side-by-side coaching and modeling from our instructional leads in the district. During our first year of implementation in 2021, we moved 115 students into the at or above grade level category in reading, and we moved 154 students in math. During the second year, which is the data you see on the screen, of implementation, we moved 317 students into the at or above grade level category, and we moved 412 students into that same category in math. We nearly tripled the number of students we were able to move into the at or above grade level category in just one year. We attribute this growth to students being in person to learn, teachers having more experience with the newly adopted curriculum, and the on-the-job and in-the-moment support that our instructional leads are providing to teachers in the classroom. How about that, Herb? You may have heard that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is transitioning from Missouri School Improvement Program Version 5, or IMSA 5, that is used to determine school district accreditation status, to IMSA 6, beginning during the 2022-23 school year. In IMSA 6, there's a large component measuring academic growth and district continuous improvement. On the screen, you'll notice a projected proficiency percentage of 18% in ELA and 10% in math, according to the number of students who are performing at grade level or above. We do have to take some caution with these projections due to the changes that are being made from IMSA 5 to IMSA 6. In addition, as we move forward into this new IMSA transition, it is critical that NSC monitor the growth of every child and that we put systems and structures in place to support that growth in addition to what we have already implemented. One example of what we are doing now to begin monitoring that growth is through our summer school model. In previous years, we participated in summer journey. While our students and teachers enjoyed the program, we didn't really have evidence that each child enrolled was making adequate growth as a result of the program. This year, we still have summer school open to all students for participation, and we targeted groups of children who need to continue to make steady academic growth due to gaps in their learning as a result of maybe remote learning or any other factor. Students this summer will receive instruction in literacy and math specific to their individual needs rather than the same curriculum for all students. Currently, NSC is partnering with Beyond Housing, Operation Food Search, BJC, and various alumni groups. The partnership with these groups and others is essential to supporting the whole child. While our main quarter of business in the school district is teaching and learning, we simply cannot get to that business if our students, teachers, and families have basic needs that are not being met. As you know, the aftermath of the pandemic has affected many people in a variety of ways. We recognize that providing support to meet the critical needs of our students is foundational to their education as a whole, and we must continue to build our system of resources to provide for our students and our community. In addition to our current support services, NSC is pursuing a federal grant to provide comprehensive wraparound services to support identified areas of need, including basic needs, healthcare, parent engagement, academics, social and emotional learning, and college and career readiness. A comprehensive needs assessment will occur if we are awarded the grant. Dr. Petty, is it you or Dr.?
Evening, everybody. Just a quick shout out. I see in the audience, there's a donor who's donated to Normandy High School graduates dozens of years of support for college through the Friends of Normandy Foundation. He may not want to be recognized, but we do see Mr. Hart, who has donated to, 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 to. Very briefly, wanted to share with you an update on our financials. As Dr. Petty mentioned, we are in solid position, but we are aware that the DESI federal relief money will be running out. So we're very strategic about how we will be spending that down. To give some context to our financial situation, you should know that in 2013, when Normandy lost accreditation, the transfer program began and over 1,200 students attended schools throughout the San Luis region, and those students lived right here in our community. The district picked up the tab for the tuition to those districts, as well as transportation. And the total amount that the district spent was over $41 million over that seven or eight-year period. Our staff, who's been with us, have been through, in some ways, some trauma as a result of that. There have been pay freezes for a number of years, and we're just starting to, with provisional accreditation that occurred in 2017, the bleeding has stopped with regard to that. But as a result, we feel like we haven't invested in capital and facilities in much the way that we feel like we should have during that time. So we are doubling down now on that. As you can see on the screen, we're grateful for the voters who approved the no-tax increase bond issue that's being used to improve Normandy High School. In general, from a financial perspective, we're in solid position and we have met all state federal guidelines related to financial management with no audit findings in this year. We believe that the investment in financials goes directly into the next slide, which Dr. Petty had mentioned, teachers' talent. I believe this is a big challenge facing our district. The teacher shortage across the country is affecting Normandy just like districts all across the country. Teachers are feeling burned out. They spend their planning periods covering for a teacher who is absent. And sometimes, there is many as 18% of our students don't have a certified teacher who's teaching them because of the shortage. This is serious. We can see a causal relationship with the teachers in the room with our academic gains. We believe this is a key factor in helping our students to get to that next level. We do have those leads who Dr. Ryder mentioned. These are staff members, and their job is to coach teachers to be their very best. Because many times, we might just have a first-year teacher. But so much of the time, these leads are called in to be emergency substitutes, and they're not able to continue on with coaching teachers on how to teach math and reading well. Now, we are taking a number of steps to address this. For one, we've increased teacher salaries in our collaborations with the union. 6% increase for next year for teachers. That's on top of a 5% increase this year over the prior year. At this time, a Normandy teacher can be working for as much as $113,000 per year. We believe that's the highest in the region. We believe teachers' jobs should be recognized with dignity, and they can continue to teach until they get to retirement. We have a number of ways to incentivize folks referring. If you're a staff member and you refer a bus driver or a teacher, you're in line for $1,000 or $2,000 referral stipend. So we are taking some steps. We also recognize deep listening is important. For Normandy to be a great place to work, a happy place to work, you look forward to coming to work every day, as my friend Randy Shipman says. We want this to be a place where everybody feels good going home at the end of the day. We think it's important to listen deeply to our, to our staff. We've started a board-approved engagement survey, and we're using that data to make changes to better support our staff. We're starting a listening program where we have, every member of the district will be invited to sit down with the district leadership and share their concerns for what they think we can do to make Normandy a happier place for them to come to work. You'll be speaking much more about this at your tables as we move, as we proceed. With that, I'll hand it over to President Ronald Roberts to conclude our presentation.
Again, thank you. Thank you to, thank you, Dr. Busutieri. Thank you to the, my fellow board members, the administrators, teachers, our teachers. Did I say our teachers? Yes. Our staff and the parents and the community leaders for being behind this movement to make Normandy a great place. I'll leave you with this. Again, watch the commencement ceremony last night. It will inspire you like it inspired me. And the commencement speaker laced throughout his speech, his remarks. "God's Men," poem often recited by Dr. Benjamin Eliza Mays, who was president of Morehouse College, responsible for the Morehouse Mystique. That mystique is similar to the Normandy mystique that we're talking about. And I've only just admitted, only 60 seconds in it. Forced to pardon me, can't refuse it. Didn't seek it, didn't choose it. But it's up to me to use it. I must suffer if I lose it. Give account if I abuse it. Just a tiny little minute, but eternity is in it. That is representative of what we have right now. We don't have a lot of time to make Normandy a great place. We have a tiny little minute, but eternity is in it. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Chris Craven. I'm president and CEO of Beyond Housing. If you see on your agenda, we're supposed to stop at 7:00. No, we're not. Thanks to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Go to 7:30. So we have two questions at the table. Quick reminder, this is the DESI public hearing. So the two questions that the department wants our community's feedback on. There will be several other opportunities as, as the months go on. We have town hall meetings that are gonna be facilitated between the school district and this partnership and Beyond Housing to further the conversation about what comes next for the district. At your table, there is a facilitator. If you can raise your hands, your facilitator. All right. Every table has a facilitator. Because we're running a little short on time, here's what we're gonna do. First question, that's on your golden rod piece of paper.